Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April meeting of the Elementary School Board. The meeting is in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, and ever-taken in justice for all.
We're going to start our meeting with a presentation from this board.
This is the almost final budget presentation. It all depends on what they do at all. But this is as far as we know at this point in time. So we have our budgetary expenditures, our projected revenues, and our highlights. And if you look on Slide 3, you'll see that I broke it down by contractual salaries, operating expenses, debt service, equipment expenses, health insurance expenses, and release of the new fleet of buses. The one thing that is new to this budget is the equipment expense line. And the reason for that is we lost a flat stock over the many storms that we had. It was a 12-, 14-year-old truck. We had bought it used, purchased it used, from one of the local municipalities. It developed some engine problems. We sent it to the garage. The original estimate was $8,000. They called me back and said as they got into it, it was going higher and higher. And I said, "The vehicle with that maybe just not worth putting that kind of money into." So I stopped the work. And we have the truck on the agenda tonight to be excised. And that is why we're adding $33,000 for the truck. We normally have some equipment money available if we need some furniture or maintenance needs some equipment, or just to have in case of an emergency that we need to get some equipment that we don't have. So that is the one difference that you are going to see. We did get the final rates on our health insurance. Health insurance rates went up by 18 percent. As I did the budget, I figured out our Medicare reimbursement cost more exactly. In the past, we've never had them exact. It's always been a guess and a number in the line. So this year, we put them in more exactly of what they're actually going to cost. So the numbers did fluctuate in Medicare reimbursement, and health insurance, and body out.
Ruth, can I ask you, that 17.63 percent increase, what is that in terms of dollar, dollar increase? An erupting?
Yes, you can ask without, but I'm not going to sweep off the top of my head. I add it here.
Do you know, was Orange Ulster Health Plan successful in negotiating it on some of the things?
Yes.
They were.
Yes. We're also going to be soliciting a new claims administrator. And the executive director will most likely be replaced. So the total dollar on the health insurance is $302,000. The increase. So on the next page, you see I did a chart, because sometimes it's a little easier than reading all those numbers to see how much money we've now. You'll see that our operating expenses and our salaries, they're pretty much equal. Our transportation lease is 2 percent of the budget. And it's not an increase, you know, we did that cost neutral, so by cutting other lines and as the sale of our current fleet. Our health insurance increase is right there. And when you do this, this is the percentage of the entire budget, the entire amount of money that makes up the budget, just so you're not confused by these percentages. Equipment is negligible, less than 1 percent. And our debt service is down to 9 percent at this point in time. And that is going to continue to decline because we are looking in the next few years to roll off the debt service. Projected revenues. Now, these are based on the numbers from the Governor's Executive Budget Date projections that are released end of January, beginning of February. So we backed into our property, you know, we did our property tax cap. We stayed under the 2 percent, 1.81. So a total increase of $179,409 for our property taxes. Our state aid is going up, based on those figures, 1.7 percent. Our other smaller revenues, they really increased because of the sale of our fleet. And I want to say $76,000 is a very conservative number. I really am basing that on the supplier's trade-in value. I didn't want to get too aggressive with that and then fall short. We are anticipating an unencumbered unassigned fund balance of $275,000, which is a decrease of $225,000 from last year. So that's a 45 percent decrease in what we anticipate in the balance of the budget. And that is just the unassigned unassigned fund balance. That is not reserves, because I anticipate ending this year with enough money to cover that, with the projections I have for this budget. And that's over. Come back? Just point back?
You see arrows here?
There we go. So there should be a chart.
Can I ask you, back on the fund balance? That seems good, but you know, there's been a series of recommendations from the State Controller about the way that we should be using our fund balances. Does that align with the control of recommendations?
To be honest, I can't answer you that question off the top of my head, because I would have to go back and see what we had on in the last few years. From my perspective, I think that's very good, that we have brought the cost of our budget down so much that we can not anticipate using so much fund down. Because we'd also have to dip into our reserves. And we really want to stop doing that. We really want to start building those again.
Catch 22, Brian, is the Control's office indicates the school districts have all of these reserves. But then, when you use them, you're ridiculing for doing something. But the direct answer to your question is, based on what standard course is looking for, yes, this is the direction that we need to go in. Okay? And we ultimately need to bring that figure down to zero. And we anticipate we'll be able to do that within the next block of years.
And it's really based on a lot of proactive planning as far as maintenance, repairs, trying to get ahead of things, so we're not putting out fires. When you let things go, it costs more money. It's no different than a car. You don't do the preventative maintenance, the repairs, it could very well cost you twice as much. So it's really focusing on that and kind of getting things lined up. And also, we had some retirements and resignations, which we are going to eliminate through attrition. Everyone is losing their position. Our programs have not been affected at all, which is good. We brought in some BOSI services in-house, and just a better use of money.
And I misspoke, it's three years, that's what I said before last week. And the figures that Ruth was bringing to the table night are better than what we originally anticipated.
Yes, it is, it is better. So the highlights are that we are remaining within the tax cap. Our corporate code remaining intact. Our BOSI services are reduced through reassignment in the district, some of them. Our personnel costs are reduced due to retirements and attrition. Our health insurance rates, while they are a concern, initial research I have done is that rural plans have incurred a high rate of increase this year. However, I do believe the plan is working very hard on bringing that down. And I'm also, I'm researching other options, because we may have to start to offer some other options that are cheaper. And that will, we address the negotiations with our bargaining agreements. Because I think they're pretty much, they're very aware of these things.
Well, I know it's a much larger issue than that particular health plan has to do with our whole system, and it's affecting everybody who's private insurance. So I know we're talking about this year's budget, but is this like a one-time phenomenon? Or is this something that we just know structurally our health insurance is going to continue to increase each year by this kind of margin? Because if that's the case, that's not really sustainable. We're going to have to come up with a plan to be able to cover it. So is there something unique that happened this year, or is this something we're going to have to live with?
I think it was a combination of things for this year. In fact, in last year, we didn't raise rates enough. I think the Work Care Act has had a great impact on health insurance across the board. I also think it's been a lack of monitoring of our social health plan, which has been up to the forefront and is now being addressed. So we covered the flat truck, we covered the fund balances, you know, we reduced that greatly. Our reserves are untouched. This budget is balanced that I present to you, based on the Governor's Executive Budget Date figures from February.
I'll make a comment on that. Last I checked before I worked in here, the Assembly was still sitting in Albany. The Senate had left for a two-week recess. And the Governor's final pronouncement was, he's not concerned because he's got a two-month buy with the extension they passed on Monday. So he's in no rush to get a budget done. He's blaming that on Washington, but one has nothing to do with the other, because the budget that the administration is presenting in Washington is effective October 1st. So it's kind of apples and oranges. The Governor was recommending that school districts use the figures in the executive budget for their projections. Normally, we would bring this to you for a vote tonight. We have a meeting on April 18th to approve the BOSI's budget candidates. We're going to hold off asking for a motion on our budget until then, to see if there's any movement in Albany. Ruth and I, in the interim, are going to check with our colleagues to see what figures they're going to use, because there's two schools at law. The four more conservative ones are using last year's figures. The more liberal ones are using the Governor's pronouncement that his executive budget is the minimum school districts will get. So we're going to do a little balling around over the next week and a half to see what everybody is doing. I personally feel comfortable, based on the Senate and the Assembly's projections of what they were asking for, that using the executive budget is the low end, and is a safe number, because the Assembly, the Senate asked, the Governor offered $1 billion more over last year. The Senate wanted 1.3 billion. The Assembly wanted 1.8 billion. And the final talks that broke down, they were back to the Governor's $1 billion point. So I think that would be a safe number, but we don't need to take action tonight. So we'll wait the extra nine days to see if anything develops in Albany. I know that the Assembly was hoping to get something done, and the Senate, though they left all, is that they would come back at the speakers' call, but I don't know if that's going to happen or not. And then they're going to be out of town for two weeks. So we're going to do our final action April.
The one thing I do want you to be aware of, though, we do have to wait, but you should know that our state aid increased over last year by only $108,871. So should we have to revert to last year's aid figures to adopt the budget? We will be okay. Not that it won't be difficult, but we'll be okay, because we have lowered that fund balance so much. And we would still be safe.
What's the number in the Governor's proposal?
Well, it's the proposed that we are to get is $6,503,500.
Which is the $108,000?
It's an increase of $108,871 from the last, this school year that we are in now. So it's not, it's not as horrible as it sounds, although it certainly leaves us in a lot of trouble.
Dr. Before, out of curiosity, I haven't read this anywhere, so are they wrangling over just money, or are they wrangling over some kind of new education issues?
This has nothing to do with education. The issues that are holding it up is raising the criminality age from 16 to 18. That's the big issue that's holding it up. They tie some type of issue for, a tax for property developers to rent stabilization. And that is supposed to come due in a year or two. And the Governor wants to do, it's supposed to come due this year. He wants to kick it down the road. The issues that are holding it up have nothing to do with education. Okay? Every account that I've read is basically, they've come down from the 1.8 billion, so it's going to be between what the Governor said and what the Senate said. But all of them is back to the bad old ways. They're holding the budget hostage to issues that have nothing to do with the budget.
Do you have any other questions?
I like how we're reducing, we're using the fund balance. Tell us, what would need to happen for us to continue to decrease that to zero over the next two years?
Yeah. And I would say probably, yeah, expenses, personal expenses. Maybe some retirements could happen. That would stop. I mean, I've cut the rest of the budget quite a bit. I don't think we can cut it any. I don't think we really, I mean, other than, you know, we're going to need another truck, that would come out, and then we're going to get more state aid for the bus lease in the following year. So, well, we get 43 percent, so that's about $120,000 this year.
My thought is, it is already a skinny budget.
It's a very skinny budget.
I gotta tell you, I think this is fantastic, and I haven't got my glasses, but you've got 1.84 percent increase. You've got your fund balance, a decrease of 40 percent. Now, if you take the $79,490 increase, and we get a $108,000, that's your goal figure. I am very, very pleased.
Well, we have, Dr. Before and I have been very strategic in spending this year, and that will allow us to carry that fund balance forward.
Well, kudos.
Thank you.
And it does help us.
Any more questions?
Mr. Clark?
Can I ask one more question?
You can.
Trouble sleeping last night, so I was thinking, always makes me trouble. First of all, I want to say, Dr. Before and Ruth, I think you did a terrific job on budget with what you had, you worked with. I'm still not voting for the budget. I'm no longer a school board member. I'm no longer a parent. I'm a straight taxpayer right now. So when I got up this morning, I took an index, like, you were lying down in the center. What am I getting? I'm getting buses. All the employees are getting raises. I'm getting to pay for healthcare for all the employees. That's what I'm getting. When you put up your revenues, I see state aid at $180,000. I see the tax levy at $179,000. But I see other things being used to fund the budget. We had a speech teacher here, $74,000. We no longer do. I paid for that speech teacher in this year's budget. If I have to replace that speech teacher, I'm going to have to pay again in next year's budget. So I, as a taxpayer, look at it this way. That $74,000 that I was giving back, and now I've got to put it in next year's budget. Same thing with the librarian, $65,000. Bus, that bus, leftover buses, $75,000. Those are the taxpayer buses. All of us, they belong to the district. Teaching assistant, $27,000. We no longer have a psychologist in this school. I don't know what that psychologist cost us for BOSIs, but it was budgeted for $75,000, I think, when it was in-house. Okay, now, what do the reserves belong to? Where do the reserves come from? I gave you on the board some information that you gave to me. In 2009, 2010, 2011, the tax levy in this school district went as high as $10,700,000. That tax levy and two previous were put into the fund balance. They became our reserves. $2.5 million in 2012, with $2.5 million in reserves. That was taxpayer money, not with school district money. So you can't just tell me that it's only costing $179,000 in tax levy, because it's costing us all these other things. And if we had to replace these other things, it would cost money. So when I look at what I'm getting, for what I'm paying, it's not a good deal for me. And I don't think it is for the rest of the taxpayers either. Thank you.
Can I just say something, well, with all due respect? Okay?
Sure.
And I'm not great with figures, but I think we need to take a look at what the kids are getting also. We're not talking academics. And, and let's face it, books go up. We've got BOSIs is going up, right? BOSIs classes that we get for them. Service, everything, a couple of stuffy, right? But things won't like that, but we have to look at, yes, salaries are going up. But so with the kids' education.
Do you know how much salaries are going up?
I just had it.
Okay. The kids, whether or not, this is not a qualitative discussion. I don't know anything about the speech teacher or the librarian. The kids don't have them any longer. They don't have psychologists. They don't have a teacher.
All, all three statements are inaccurate, but go ahead.
Some of them are inaccurate.
Because several of those positions were repurposed through BOSIs and appear in other line items, or otherwise being covered through other personnel in the district. So I'm not sure where you're getting your information, but it's very inaccurate. And I would advise that if you're going to make statements like that, you ask the people who made the decisions, then whatever sources you're currently using, because every one of those statements is inaccurate.
You just put on the board that you were saving money through attrition and retirement.
Exactly. But we didn't say that there wasn't going to be a psychologist, a librarian, or a speech teacher, did we? So you got that information from somewhere, I'm not sure where.
So we're getting them.
But you didn't get that from us. Okay, but I would just caution you, when you make these broad statements, you make sure they're factual. Because they're not. I made the decisions, Paul, so yes, as may.
What I'm trying to say is, yes, it would cost money, but right now, I think our main priority is keeping getting them across, especially.
You folks will say? We're going to move to our elementary principal report in this meeting.
On March 22nd, we had outstanding performance from our band, Vocal Music in Our Schools Month, great. March 33rd, Mrs. Davis and Ms. Lombardi presented, had two guest speakers for recycling presentation in kindergarten. And that was very informative, it really attracted quite a fan to that. She isn't a student.
Yeah, it was cool.
On March 31st, we had our third quarter ending, kind of relying. For those who've been recording for 12:00, Andy, that is in. PTA has sponsored Jump the Light, that will be at 1:30 tomorrow. Of course, we're not invited. And March 27th, April 27th is a discount fundraiser. And May 2nd is the teacher appreciation luncheon. So we're pretty busy, a lot of activities going on, and I think so are the fourth quarter.
Any questions? I don't have any questions, but I, I made a couple of notes, guys, of things that I was able to attend this month.
Please.
I want to share a couple related to elementary school.
Absolutely, please.
The Music in Our Schools Month concert was really amazing. So I went as a parent, but what was cool about that was like literally every classroom performed. Like, every one of them got up from pre-k all the way through sixth grade, and they all had like this really well-choreographed and rehearsed. And I was amazed that they had been able to spend that much time on rehearsing the music and doing the dances and all that stuff, and they really had a fun time. And there were a bunch of parents in there too, which is always good to see, you know, because it's hard to prepare, but that was fantastic.
Is it full of 100 parents there?
Yeah, it was full, it was a full house. And it was, and then, yeah. But I mean, I don't know, is that new for all the grades to?
That was our first time.
Yes, I was just amazed.
It was a lot of mine.
It wasn't like, they weren't just like getting up and singing a song that they had just learned that day. These things were practiced, they were all really involved in it, they're dancing around stuff, it was really great to see. And then, of course, in the evening, then, the older grades and the high school kids performed. And that was one of those, what do they call that, where it goes around, each group performs around?
Prism.
Prism, yeah. So they all performed, and they all sounded really great. And are you going to be presenting anything with the concert in your report, Mr. Krebs?
No.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll share this. The high school band was, sounded fantastic. Like, there was the, I guess, the low brass section, you could actually feel the sound, and it sounded really great there. And Mr. Mivison had this song called "The A-plus March." And he gave this intro to explain, you know, what this is all about. And it was, it was really, you were there, you must have been there. No, okay, so "The A-plus March" was, he described how like an A+ in normal academics is like 97, 98, 99, 100, you know, that's something that you're obviously very proud of, but in music, that means you get 3 percent wrong to get a 97. So you kind of went through how, you have a piece and it's like 1,000 notes, and you get, you know, 30 of them wrong, well, it sounds like a disaster, you know? So the band kind of played it as like a 97 percent, and then they went back and they tried to make it to like a perfect A+. And I thought, I had a great music teacher at my school, and he said a lot of things that were inspirational, but for those kids that he gave that lesson to, I think they'll think that through in any part of their life. They want to always do a try for perfection, and that's really, really cool. So, and then the other thing that I observed in the elementary school was, Mrs. Lombardi and Ms. Davis are in the back. They have this program where the recycling coordinator for Sullivan County came in. And the kids loved it, and, you know, they gave a little trick presentation. All the kids had really good questions. Some had very interesting questions, like, "Do you have a cat?" But they invited us to come in, and I had an opportunity to go in there and see it. And that was fantastic. And by the way, after, Mrs. Lombardi and Ms. Davis, remember he was talking about how some kindergartens have composting?
Yes.
And he was suggesting that maybe we take some of the scraps from our cafeteria and kind of, you know, help with the composting program at kindergarten. He mentioned to me afterwards that there might be people locally that would support that. So I ran into a couple of those people, and I'll give you their names.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be, that would be really good to do.
Perfect, thank you.
And then finally, I just wanted to acknowledge, Mrs. Nealon, I think is here, and Mr. Dunker. Another thing I got to do, which was really fun, is with all the snow that we had, they took all fifth-grade classes across the street to Circle Park for an hour and a half of recess and sleigh riding. And that was just really awesome to see. So kudos to both of you guys on that. It wasn't easy, even the teachers landed on sleighs.
It was a cold day. But it was fun.
That's all, yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions for any? Okay, Mr. Krebs?
Good evening. Our student council members are here, so I'll let them start, and then I'll kind of, don't have any of the sports. Mr. Gas was not here, so I'll go with that. So you guys are up first.
So yesterday, we had the first color board at our school, and I think that was a big success, and there were a lot of positive feedback. Everyone's had a great time there. Our school is doing the High School Musical in two weeks, and that's coming along very well. I know the higher look like is directly. Is that amazing?
Prom is May 13th. It's slowly coming up. The prom committee has been planning, and we've gotten a lot of stuff together, and we're hoping for a very successful prom.
Where is it? Where is the prom?
Oh, it'd be Erie in Port Hurst. Yes. Community Cry Day is also coming up. I know of the clubs I'm in, we're starting to plan on what we're doing for the event. And we're excited for Community Cry. The people who got into the vision, this is announced. Yeah. I got it. I got it. Thank you.
What program do you, what do you want to study?
Oh, I want to go to public health and hopefully become an epidemiologist, or go into infectious disease. Oh, nice. Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Do you guys ever do the senior prom for the seniors?
Oh, we're still planning on it. We have to go to a senior citizens meeting, hopefully.
Just kidding, Ozzy.
Okay.
She wants to come.
Shush. I told them I would help.
Mr. Krebs, I know you're in the middle of your report, but they presented the color board, so I wanted to.
Go right ahead.
Thank you for inviting us aboard, that was fun. What that included, just so you guys know, was, um, the teachers were used as healing hungry hippos, which was very good. And Mr. DeBor, Dr. DeBor, uh, single-handedly pulled the entire student body.
He's about one of a single-handed.
A little bit of help, Brian Jasper helped out a little bit.
Dress suit, the dress suit and the shirt didn't help.
Color board, a little bit of the students down. So that was, uh, that was really cool. So good job to the students and to all the teachers that helped that thing.
So hopefully, we'll have some pictures up on Facebook shortly on that. Lisa from Olson Bosis was here, pictures of that also. Mr. Gas had listed one thing, he just wanted to recognize Garrett Colvinback and Lindsay Kelty. They will be our senior scholar athletes upcoming on April 20th at Coles Highland House for a presentation that day. Both of these athletes excel in the classroom and playing on the field. Garrett was captain of the soccer team and is captain of our baseball team. Lindsay was captain on our soccer team and will be playing soccer at East University in the fall. So those are our two representatives this year as scholar athletes. Probably, I think, next week or the week after, they will come out with a spread and record, um, pretty much showcasing all the scholar athletes from Section 9. So we're proud of them. We indicated that the High School Musical will be taking place this April 21st, 22nd, 23rd. There's, um, a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday showing, this High School Musical. Josh Lance is taking a number of first years this year, as we always do, to Law Day at the Sullivan County Courts, where they participate in a mock, um, trial. So that's a pretty good, um, investment for some of the kids that are seeking to maybe add in that, into that field. And they participate with all of the students in Sullivan County, so the groups of students from each of the schools in Sullivan County go on that day. And also, that day is the first day that we will be starting, um, we have AP courses, as you are aware of. So beginning May 1st starts our AP Psychology testing that day. We have Physics, AP Physics, US History, and we end on May 8th with our Music Theory AP course. So those tests are coming up in May, so it's busy, uh, that'll, um, pretty much, it's find out about that. They take them in-house, so this will be, um, our second year doing that in-house. Last year, we did it with Music Theory, so now we'll be doing it with the rest of the classes this year. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions for?
Can we get a, can we still be going to the lowest to individual PS and stuff?
Okay. That brings us to our district treasury report, Ms. Lewis.
So not only have I been busy developing the budget, but I'm also with the legal notices and the propositions, and making sure they get picked up timely and correctly worked it. But our, our, we have contacts for water services and transportation that way, and academic field trips, which I need to receive for review. And we're, we're showing agenda for both, I think. Processed the renewal of our insurance policies to be nicer, updated our assets, so that we would get a competitive rate. Reviewed the lead testing and requirements by the Department of Health, and all of our sources have now passed, so we are one percent. Pictures and so on, so of course, to make sure that all those sources pass. We're for the Public Health Consortium for rate setting, and we also had an energy audit in NYSC for LED lighting at the New York Senior High School, and we're reviewing that proposal at this time. This is potential for saving approximately $22,000 to New York Public.
Just to piggyback on that, that actually came from the town of Highland, because they're working very closely with NISIP and a few other entities to improve the energy efficiency of the town. Part of what they're looking at is also doing a solar project. And we're still looking at doing a solar project at McKenzie, but the high school, because of the duration of the land and the roofs in the building is always problematic. So we have endorsed Highland's efforts to do this, because the company they were dealing with needed them to have partners, because their usage wasn't sufficient enough to warrant the company to come in and do the survey. So Supervisor Haas approached me, and I told him absolutely anything that will, uh, benefit the district and the town both. So we've signed on with them on that end for the solar and, uh, Supervisor Hallick and, I'm sorry, Councilman Hallick, and I can't remember the other councilman's name, came to visit with Ruth and I, and this energy performance project is an option of that meeting. So we're trying to work very closely with them to make what they're looking to do happen, and to benefit mutually from, uh, cost efficiencies.
Very good. Any other questions? That brings us to our district report, Dr. DeBor.
Two things. First, in your packet, this is spreadsheet. This is the opt-outs for, uh, the first part of our state assessment test, testing, which is the ELA. It's broken down by grade level, by grade. As a summary, um, the overall opt-out rate, which I'm using, is in the bottom right-hand column of day three, was forty-one percent. It was four percent greater than last year. Some of the grade levels did fluctuate.
I'm looking for the spreadsheet, you said it's on the.
So the overall opt-out rate was forty-one percent, which was an increase of four percent from last year. Some grade levels went up, some went down, some held steady for last year. I'll have another report, uh, next round of testing is beginning of May, so we'll, I don't know if we'll have that in time for the May board meeting, if not, we'll just. And the only other thing I have, it should be buried in your packet somewhere, this letter came in today, uh, and I know the individuals with us tonight. So I am very pleased to announce that, um, the Eldred Central School District's honorary for the Sullivan County School Boards Association Outstanding Educator of the Year Award is Ms. June Lombardi. And the reception will be held on May 31st at 5:30 at the Bella Roma Clubhouse, and hopefully, everyone will be able to attend.
May I say something?
If you're interested in tickets, see Lisa.
Can I say something? When you came in today, I thought you came to see River. I was surprised you came to see me.
River lives in my office, why would I have to come into your classroom?
I believe I told you that he likes River better than me, did you?
I do.
Any other questions for?
Congratulations, June.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, I just have one thing, attended, we attended last night, myself, Dr. DeBor, and Ms. Lewis, attended the, it was Tuesday, excuse me, um, the annual BOSI's dinner meeting. We had the pleasure of, of dining with two of our students, which was, which was, which is always makes it that much better. During the dinner, it was the BOSI's, the Sullivan County BOSI's, both the special ed side and the CTEC side presented their budgets, which is what will be, will be, um, what will be voting on the April 18th. So that's all I have. Okay? Do you have something to add?
Yeah, I have one more thing, because my packets are all over. Yes, I forgot, Brian reminded me. You will have this in your packet, it's also up on the website, we're gonna be doing a press release. This is the fifth year in a row that, um, the NAMM Foundation has recognized the Eldred Central School District for outstanding support of music education, enriching the lives of children, and advancing student achievement. So it's 2017 Best Communities for Music Education, and that had gone up on our website, and we got this from Mr. Glovish yesterday. And the thanks goes to Mr. Nyvason, Mr. Glovish, and Ms. Materano for all of their efforts in making our music program an outstanding program in this area.
Absolutely, thank you.
I think I told you at the last meeting, I was struck at the Small County Music Festival, like how many pitch in Eldred are up there with like much bigger schools? So we have a string program, which is a responsibility for a small school too. So when, when I found out about this award, which is fantastic, I just, I looked into the program, and here's what I found, this is really kind of cool. There are 527 schools across the country that actually win this honor. Now, this is the fifth year in a row?
Yeah.
Fifty year in a row. I don't know how many schools get it five years in a row, but there are only 527 selected this year as a Best Community for Music Education. So then, I wanted to know how many school districts are there in the country? And according to the census data, there are 13,506 school districts. So that means that our little tiny school is in the top four percent of schools nationwide in terms of its commitment to music education, which comes from the board, from our administration, from our fantastic, um, student performers. We're also one of two districts in all of Sullivan County, Monticello, and the other one, which of course is a big school, wins this honor. So it's a pretty significant thing in itself, but just to recognize how small we are and how special we is, deserves a tremendous amount of congratulations.
And that's again, I'm incredibly, you can let me off with that, it's a time, you can see, you have such a small school, you have the academics, the music, the athletic, or the, the art, you know? And we are led by such a small school.
Okay, anything else? That brings us to our public comment, limited to our consent agenda items 401 to 704. I say this every time, the reason we have a public comment now, rooted just to our consent agenda, is because historically, we're, we used to have the public comment only at the very end, and people would wanna talk about things that we just voted on. So we would prefer to hear consent agenda item comment right now, and then we'll open the floor at the end at Section 10, okay? So any comment directed to consent agenda items? Okay, can we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, 401 to 704? I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any conversa, any discussion? I just wanna point out, 704 is a, is a, is a resolution recognizing our, our students that achieved Eagle Scout. Devin Visjack, Garrett Colvinback, Joseph Santora, and Thomas Maxwell Smith. And obviously, it's a tremendous accomplishment for those young people.
Great.
I wanna make a comment on that. Prior to moving up this way, I was very active with the Nassau County Council Voice Scouts of America, and I sat on their executive board for six years. In a very densely populated area such as Nassau County, to move up this way and have a rural scout troop on multiple occasions over the past sixteen years I've been in this district, have the multiple Eagle Scouts honored every several years, is an outstanding feat. And every one of these young men, or almost every one of these young men, has been from our school. I've never seen a troop have that many young men earn the rank of Eagle Scout. And I'm from an area where you tripped over scout troops, because we're four or five in every pack. So it's, it's an outstanding accomplishment for the young.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Ruth, I see the two bus services, is one a primary and one a backup, or can you alternate?
Yes, most districts contract more than one of the many contractor athletes and academics, just in case one company cannot fulfill their need.
Now, this would only be if one of our buses.
If our drivers are not. I always put forward to our drivers first.
Sure.
And then if we cannot fill a run with our driver, then it goes to our.
There's a possibility with the skirt that we've been having, that we will need to utilize this service more frequently than in the past, because just about all of our baseball and softball teams will be scheduled for later in April and in May, because the fields are not ready at any of the Sullivan County schools. So that would pose a, there will be an issue, because we won't have enough drivers on certain days to get those trips out, because it'd be going to too many different locations.
The least expensive contractor will be both.
So have we worked with Quality Bus in the past, or just with?
We have not, but both Melissa and I have a relationship with people who call it bus, and they offer to give us assistance and backup.
So I have a couple of questions about language in the contracts. They're not in the public board packet, they were in the protected board packet. Can I ask these questions about the language in the contracts? It's okay? Okay, current. I didn't see anything in the contract about, um, I think what Amador just asked about is that it's basically upon our discretion, we call them, but there's nothing that stipulates that it's only when our bus drivers are unable to take the run. Is there anything in?
I think the notice attached says it's on ASME.
ASME, yeah, there's, there's language in there that says, I have.
But their contract wouldn't say that.
Is there anything?
That's an internal, their contract is service on demand.
Yep, I wouldn't expect to see it in there, but I, is there anything in our board policies, in our bus driver contract, that requires us to utilize our bus drivers before we?
Yes, and, and past practice, we've always offered it to our bus drivers first.
So when you say yes, that there is something in policy or in the bus driver?
I don't know if it's written, but the bus driver's contract has a specific procedure for allocating runs and extra runs that we must go through before we do anything.
Okay. So the, the cost is different for these two contracts. G Davis is significantly less per hour than Quality, so what you're saying is that only if G Davis is unable to fulfill our request, then we're quality rate for a higher rate, okay? Now, in the RFP, um, we wrote the RFP.
It's a quote, because we are below the threshold requiring an RFP.
Let me, let me ask more specifically, there are two, you, you break out the rate for trips that do not include New York City in the metropolitan area, and then a separate rate for New York City in the metropolitan area. That's the, really the only distinction to ask, if it comprises, right, one is trips, it's not different kinds of trips, it's really just where they're going.
Correct.
All right, so the language differs though, and that's the, the part that I'm trying to understand, is that in the quote that we're asking for trips that do not include New York City, this is what we say, "Transportation of after-school extracurricular and athletic activities and events." Okay? In the transportation for New York City, we say "transportation of academic and extracurricular field trips." Is there a distinction between after-school extracurricular versus academic and athletic activity versus extracurricular field trips? Or did we just, there is a distinction? Okay. Is it gonna, because that language actually got into all the contracts too, broke it out that way, which felt that differently.
Because academic field trips are related to curriculum, and oftentimes, they will take a trip into a museum in the city. They are an educational venue in the city. And extracurricular clubs will also take trips to the city, so you have to differentiate between the two. Very rarely do we send it, especially in summer, we send athletics into the city, maybe track, but I don't, I think, across the country now, so they do not.
Winter is mostly the track, yeah.
Yeah, winter is, uh, winter track goes into the armor.
Yeah.
But what about the word "after-school," transportation of after-school extracurricular versus?
Sometimes they could be leaving, a club could go after school, and it would be an extracurricular. So it could be academic.
It, it doesn't matter, right? I mean.
It really doesn't matter, just, I'm trying to cover all of the different types of trips we say. I don't wanna limit it to certain ones, and then have somebody come to you and say, "I need to do these trips," and I can't, they can't do it because of time.
You, you feel like the language is, makes sense to them, for the folks that are in the contract?
If it, I, I talk to them about it, if they don't understand the language I'm to explain it to them, why, what, my thought process is.
Here's the bigger one. Here's the bigger one. In the RFP quote, but not in the contract, there is a statement about proper licensing, credentialing, and drug testing. It's not in the contract. It causes concern of our treaty contract that we had said in RFP, the drivers must be properly licensed for transportation of school-aged children. Proof of driver credentials, physical ability, and mandatory drug testing to be provided on request of the district. It's in the RFP, but it's not in either one of the contracts.
In the contract, I do believe it says the services offered, and it, and there's a statement that says as per, quote, incorporated and attached. Which would bring the terms of the vote into the contract.
We, we would want to make sure that is in there, and otherwise we wouldn't be correctly obligated to drug testing.
And I appreciate you taking that out.
That's a CDL requirement.
Wait, I'm sorry, you're saying that in order for them to even be employed with the bus, that they have to...
To maintain a CDL.
So their drug testing and fingerprinting is at the same level as what we require of our bus drivers, just on the basis of the CDL?
Yeah. They're required to do that in contract with a public...
Well, if that's the case, we don't really have any nonsense, right? I, the point of it was, is the language in any way going to allow them to wing a lot of that, we improved drug testing? No? All right, that's all I have.
If they, if, there's a New York State regulation that says they have to be, but I'm saying, if they, if they, a driver was to pull, get pulled over and not be, have the proper credentials, plus they may be licensed.
I wasn't aware of the CDL law, so that's, yeah, thank you, Doug. Thank you, Wayne. That's all I have.
Any, any other questions, guys? Okay, then can we vote? Fine.
Uh, yes.
Carolyn Jackson, Linda, Almador?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. That takes us to full business. 801, um, the Board of Education vacancy for the term July 2017 through June 2022. Petitions can be obtained from the district clerk and must be submitted to the office by April 17, 2017. Okay? 802, meet the candidate night. Reminder of meet the candidate annual hearing of the citizens on May 4th, 2017. You can meet at 7:00 PM at the junior senior high school. And the subsequent vote on the budget, May 16, 2017, from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the junior senior high school. Any other old business?
I have something, Doug.
Okay.
Oh, yes, okay. Doug, I wanted to provide to you, as school board president, to you guys on the board as well, a document that I stumbled upon recently. It's old business because it relates to the wellness policies in the past, earlier this school year, including the recess language. And you might recall that the recess language included in our policy came primarily from the American Academy of Pediatric Recommendations. I know from my former professional experience that when it comes to pediatric health issues, the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC are normally harming on the recommendations that they put forward in regards to almost everything, immunization requirements as a perfect example. And in all of the research they have done for the Wellness Committee, I didn't see anything from CDC officially on recommendation for recess. Well, it turns out that they have been working on it all along, and they just recently published this, this guy called Strategies for Recess in School, which is the official recommendation from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. The good news is that they basically modeled their recommendation on our policy. Okay. No, um, they looked right at it. No, but most of it is actually based on the same research and evidence that the A and P use for its recommendations. But the neat thing about this one is that they actually go through a series of recommendations to guide boards of education, school administrators, teachers, community members on ways that you could successfully implement recess, while recognizing that there are some challenges. And so I'll hand this to you. I, I've kind of skimmed it. I didn't read it at great depth, but I think that if anything, you know, if it totally supports the policy that we put forward, there might be some additional steps that we might consider going somewhere down the road. So I'll hand it to you, and I will, you know, you will like...
Yeah, can you send everyone a list?
Will do, yep.
Thank you.
And I think I covered everything on my list that I wanted to share. Bear with me a moment. Yeah, I mean, I, I chimed in after the principal, of course, but I would say that, you know, the invitations that the board has been getting to participate in school programs, much appreciated. I'll try to come whenever I can because it's always nice to see what's going on in the schools. So thank you. Yeah, thanks.
That's all. Okay. Then that takes us to new business. Do you have any new business? No new business? That brings us to public comment. Any public comment, ladies and gentlemen? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have another packet I need to edit for you. I'm gonna handle this one a little more this week. I do not want to get out of the paper. I've made some comments. I'm not real proud of them, or wish I could have some income. Lots of good things happened in this school. There are great teachers in this school. There are good teachers in this school. There are average teachers in this school. And there are bad teachers in this school. Personally, an average teacher, I'm not willing to pay him $100,000 a year. Okay? Maybe you are, but I don't think the public gives a damn. We can't have average teachers making that amount of money. And I'm sorry, but I don't choose to look at them as a group, I choose that for themselves. So if I talk about teachers, I have to talk to them about, as a group. Okay, so now I made some comments about being overpaid. Maybe you don't think they are. I did some research on C3 New York. I brought up randomly seven different teachers. Now, on the paperwork there, I blacked out the names. This has nothing to do with individual people. What I did shows that these seven individual teachers, I believe there was three above step 26. Three between step 20 and 26. Two below step 20, so you get a cross section. Now, step 20 in this teacher's contract is very significant. I don't even think they know the significance of it. At step 20, teachers, in addition to their salary, get a $5,000 hit. The next year, they get the step increase. Step 22, they get another $5,000 hit. Now, I'm only going to use some of the information that I put on there. I would like the word to ask Ms. Lewis to check out the information and see if it's accurate. Check the math, make sure the math is accurate, because this is news, and I don't want it to be fake news if it goes out. You will find on that paperwork, highest paid teacher between the year 2008, increased by $40,000. That's in eight years, that's a 5%, $5,000 increase per year on average. The lowest teacher on there, you know, $19,000 increase. Very particular, pay attention to step 2011 to 2012. Besides the $2.5 million in reserves that we had in 2012, something happened in 2011. I don't know. Josh, new contract maybe?
Tom, back there. Your numbers aren't followed by us at the minute. Go ahead.
2011, 2012. Increases went from the lowest level of $11,000. Most of the increases in one year were $15,000 per year for that year. And went as high as $18,000. And that's all I'm going to do with the numbers, because I don't want to be responsible for putting out bad numbers. But when you take 2016, 2008, and subtract one from the other, that's not even I can do. So what I want the board to know is where your fund balance is at.
Any other?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just in terms of response, one gentleman raised that they started at year 21. I'm sure Ms. Lewis will do some diligence and take a look at the numbers. I do want to remind you, 2011, we got them out of contract for almost three and a half years. So a lot of that money was retro money that flowed in. I'm not sure taking a snapshot of a handful of teachers works as well as taking a look at the median salary or how we're paid.
Okay.
Actually, I just had a follow-up from the driver there.
Yes, sir.
So I understand you have adopted some superpowers, that you're able to change demographics in Sullivan County from a recent letter? I was just curious if it was magic beans or some other exciting thing that got you to be able to do that?
Do we know?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
What's that? We're trying to figure out what we missed. We'll figure it out after we're finished. We're lost.
I have a question regarding the outsourcing of buses last year with G Davis. How many times do we actually utilize that service?
I don't have an actual number of runs off the top of my head. I would have to go back to Pauline Voices and look.
Okay. And does it warrant having a backup? Were there times that they were not able to accommodate us?
Last year, they were able to accommodate us. The reason I have the backup this year is because the weather has created such a turmoil with the athletic schedule, and now I can have three or four teams going out at one night, and I can't out there. I just, even if three teams are going out one night, is if I have my own driver and then two contracted, because we don't have enough drivers in-house. And I have a sub right now who's out.
And if quality is so much more expensive than G Davis, have we looked at other potential providers rather than this quality?
I received three folks. They were the lowest two. The third was substantial more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Only twice. Okay, then I believe we need a motion to adjourn. Make that motion?
Second's fit.
Any discussion? Fine?
Yeah.
Linda?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. Good night, guys.